So we're gonna call this meeting of the casino oversight committee to order. I'm joined here today by my colleagues, Councilman Quick Bruce, and counselors Tracy Whitfield and Zaida Govan. We're also joined by a full complement of the MGM team, who I will allow to introduce themselves shortly. But let me just start with some introductory remarks. And then we can get to the meeting. So the purpose of this meeting is to get an update from MGM and their advisors on the status of the project and how everything's going in 2023. I've been meeting and discussing regularly with MGM and their stakeholders, the status of the project and some of the exciting things that they've had to announce for 2023 as we enter a more long-term post-pandemic environment. And we're excited to get this update from them. I'm gonna start by turning it over to Chris Kelly to introduce his team. And I believe there is at least a member of that team who wants to do a presentation, which we will allow screen sharing for. And then we'll circle back to any questions that come up in the course of the, in the course of the committee meeting. We're also joined by my colleague, our colleague, Counselor Tim Allen from Ward Seven. And with that, we'll turn it over to Chris and your team. If you want to start with some introductions, then I'll let you take it from there.
Sure. Well, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Counselor Fenton. And thank you to the members of the council and the media that join us today. I'll start with just an introduction of who's in the room with me. Hopefully, you can see us all on our fancy technology. And I apologize for what my face looks like, but unfortunately, that's meant to be. So to my right, I have Arlen Carballo. She is our Head of Finance for MGM Springfield. Amanda, formerly Amanda Gagnon, who is now Amanda Crabbett, was our Head of Entertainment on the property. She also works very closely with the city in the management of Symphony Hall. I have Gus Kim, our Chief Legal Counsel for MGM Springfield and Empire City. Beth Ward, our Director of Community Affairs. And Sean Dolan, our General Manager of the Mass Mutual Center. And so would like to, and Heather, hopefully you can help us bring our presentation to bear here. So hopefully everyone can see that. And hopefully, everyone in our virtual world, if you can't see that presentation, please, please let me know. But we've got about fifty slides, which sounds like a lot. And it is a lot of slides, but many of them are, I think, quick updates. And so thank you again for the time together today. Thank you for the opportunity to present what we've been working on at MGM Springfield, Symphony Hall, and Mass Mutual. And please stop me at any point. We're gonna have a couple of different speakers that address the, our most recent efforts, as well as a little bit of a look into the future. But if at any point there's a question or anything that's not clear, please jump in and we can dive into it a little bit deeper. But we used as a starting point, a conversation we had roughly a year ago, when we talked about where the property was post-COVID. Keep in mind, the city of Springfield had COVID restrictions in place until the last day of February of 2022. And that was the last major restriction we had here in the city that impacted us as well on the property side. So we're just about a year out from that. And so we tried to approach the timeline with what's happened since the beginning of 2022 through today. And so we'll start with just a quick look at the agenda. A lot of topics, again, very consistent with that meeting. A quick look at where we've been. What have we been working on recently, up to and including a pretty exciting first quarter? Very proud of the team and very proud of what we've been able to accomplish there. How much now, some probably saw on the papers, MGM Springfield passed a billion dollars in revenue in the first quarter of 2023. So what does that mean in terms of the taxes that MGM Springfield pays? We'll take a look at where we are from an employment standpoint. Quite a comeback story to be told there. Our partnerships within the development of the city, as well as some of the things we are particularly excited about. What you should expect to see in the second quarter, some of which we announced as recently as last week. Our involvement in the community, something we are extremely proud of. The events that we've put together, and of course, entertainment. Some very, very exciting things there, up to and including one more announcement that we're about to send out here shortly. So we'll start with that and go on to the next slide, Heather. And one more. So this is just a restatement of what I opened with, really beginning with, you know, an experience we all shared together in March of 2020. A lot of uncertainty, unfortunately, a profound impact on our business community, as well as our families and larger community when we saw many businesses shut down, really only essential businesses that remained open. We were closed for about four months through July 2020. In terms of an active workforce, lost almost our entire workforce out on furlough, at less than a hundred people that were active during that time period. Then worked through the chapters of the COVID story. We operated with a curfew, which is the craziest thing you can imagine in a 24-hour industry. I don't think in two decades I had ever been home for New Year's Eve, but there I was, you know, at, you know, ten thirty, eating triscuits on the couch and kind of wondering where it all went wrong. Twenty twenty into twenty-one. Really excited when that curfew lifted. But of course, we know Omicron and some of the other strains that we dealt with right through February twenty-two. So we, as a business, calculated the impact that had on our primary revenue stream, which is, is what we call gross gaming revenue. That's what we report on every month. And all told, we experienced about a hundred and twenty million dollar impact or loss to revenue during that time. The majority of it, as you can imagine, we experienced during four months of closure. If we fast forward to the better slide. We'll go one more, Heather. So, you know, to have a back one. So to have a comeback, you have to first start with a setback. And that was the slide that we just watched. And then you combine that with a little bit of resilience, a common set of goals, a little bit of grit always helps, a little bit of luck. And that's what you see really represented on the slide here. There has been a steady march of reopening, rehiring, and growing since this property shut down. And picking up with 2022, we reopened South End Market to families. We'd actually had to shut down access to South End Market for any family with children. We reopened Top Golf. We reopened Tap Bowling. Costa, of course, we reopened about this time last year. Macho Taco, a partnership with an individual in Agawam, we brought to South End Market. Free Music Friday, which is near and dear to our hearts, is a free concert series that we started during COVID. We grew in twenty-two. We're about to grow it again in twenty-three. We added food trucks, a partnership with White Lion Brewing, all of that growing in twenty-three. Tap, of course, expanded to seven days. We were operating for well over a year with only one venue that was open seven days a week, our food court. Wicked Noodle reopened. Game Sense, which is our responsible game encounter, used to be right inside of the primary entrance of the property, right at the bottom of the elevator banks. We really wanted to address a guest service issue, which was, I'd like to wake up in the morning from the hotel and go grab a cup of coffee. I'd like to grab a breakfast sandwich. We didn't have a place like that on the property. We knew we needed one and really wanted it to be there. And so we've worked with the Massachusetts Gaming Commission to not just relocate, rebuild, and expand Game Sense, but also to build Roasted Bean Coffee Shop, which we opened in the fourth quarter. Counselor Allen and I got to have a muffin from there a few months back. Love that place. I get coffee there all the time. We also brought back, again, the ice ring, expanded our food and beverage just last year and offered some adult drinks, so is hot chocolate, things like that. And that brings us to the first quarter of twenty-three. A whole lot of activity we are extremely excited about. Tap, we added lunch now four days a week. Bowling now open seven days a week. Our Top Golf weekend hours were made available to everyone, no reservation required. It's open Friday through Sunday. Costa, we expanded hours, added Sunday Indian Retail, hadn't been open for a few years. It is now open again Friday through Sunday. And I'll throw in there, it's not on the slide, but we opened a sports book. In January of twenty-three, we were the first in the state of Massachusetts to take a bet. Very proud of that. And then added mobile. About a month or so later, we expanded Chandler just last week to include Thursdays as well. And so it is a dynamic and exciting time to be on the campus at MGM Springfield. Let's jump ahead and take a look at, you know, what does a billion dollars in revenue mean from a tax standpoint? And what it means is about three hundred and sixty-four million dollars, all told, between city and state. The vast majority of that, obviously, is the tax on gross gaming revenue that goes to the state of Massachusetts, which helps fund all sorts of things, from infrastructure, education, police and fire, et cetera. And this number grows every single month. You know, I love that our numbers are publicly reported. On any given month, you can go in and see, March was one of the best months this property has ever had. And right off the top, a significant percentage of those dollars, twenty-five percent just to the state alone, comes out of that and goes right back into the Commonwealth. Jump to the employment. So we'll go one more. This slide, I realize this isn't the prettiest slide, but this is the way we report our numbers to the Massachusetts Gaming Commission every ninety days. We have a public reporting, which I think is a great thing. It provides a lot of visibility, a lot of transparency around how many people we have working at MGM Springfield, where are they from, how they break down along gender lines, full-time, part-time, all those sorts of things. But the statistic that we are most proud of is really the one at the bottom of the page that I alluded to a little bit earlier. When the property shut down and as we were trying to come back again, not knowing how long we were going to be closed for, we dropped down to less than a hundred team members. We were at two thousand, two thousand twenty-two, just before COVID hit. And every day since then, we have been focused on growing that workforce. As you look at the quarters represented here, and I'm giving you the statistic as of now, which is fourteen eighty as of today. We have been able to grow from ninety-four to one thousand four hundred and eighty. We have over two hundred open positions now. This is a huge focus on a daily basis as to how we grow the workforce and how we bring these amenities to life. One of the great things about MGM Springfield is it is a place for people to gather. But they can only do that when we have the positions filled, to offer that restaurant, to offer that bar, to offer that show. And so this is, I think, a great explanation or representation, I should say, of the comeback story as it's represented through our team, the largest single percentage of which are from Springfield. And so we recognize the role and the privilege that that represents. We can jump ahead to a little bit of a headline that I imagine everybody is pretty familiar with. It's been a very common headline across the months and the last few years. This is from Massalad a few months ago. And it's based on a reporting through a public policy organization out of Boston. It went to our state legislators as well. And just identifies, I think, in a, in a very tangible way, the issue that the state of Massachusetts is dealing with today. And certainly, in the hospitality industry, it is absolutely an issue we are dealing with and within the city. It is an issue that MGM Springfield deals with, and that is, how do you find people to fill these jobs? We have more than two jobs available for every unemployed person in the state of Massachusetts. And so how do you find ways creatively to make sure that the jobs that we offer are compelling, are competitive, are attractive, and ultimately are filled by our workforce here in Western Massachusetts? If we jump to the next slide, again, just one more way of seeing kind of where we were. Two thousand twenty-two team members in Q1 2020, just prior to closure, a low point of ninety-four active team members and where we are now, which is just a little bit shy of fifteen hundred. Really excited about cresting that. I've been talking about this fifteen hundred milestone for a while. Hopefully, it's one we see soon. And over two hundred open positions today as we sit here now. You can jump. And so I spoke to, you know, how do you become an employer of choice? This is something that we look at on a daily and weekly and monthly basis around the table as a company and certainly as a property. And these icons that you see here represent different aspects of why an individual might choose to work anywhere. It's not just the dollars and cents that you're paid as part of your hourly wage, but what is the complete package of offerings that go into your compensation decision and where you choose to work? As a company and as a property, we have looked to grow these different items over the last few years. We have increased our wages now multiple times, even outside of contracted wage rates. We have made free our team member dining room. So when you are here, you will eat for free. I just came from there and it's delicious. We have tuition reimbursement. We have 401K matches. We have opportunities for paid time off or leave and extremely competitive healthcare benefits. And so these are the steps that we have been taking to make sure that we are on, on the cutting edge of compensation in our area.
If I could just for a second, so you said over two hundred open positions.
Yeah.
Where, where do you find that most of those open positions in your organization lie? What types of jobs are remaining vacant?
It's a great question. And the first answer is, it actually spans across nearly every element of the business from, you know, we just recently hired a vice president position in one of our divisions to frontline positions. And so there are our professional, hourly, full-time, part-time, and a gamut of opportunities for folks. But as a, you know, largest percentage of open positions, as you'd imagine, food and beverage tends to be an area of the business that can have a relatively high level of turnover, but also requires a very significant level of workforce to be able to open. When we talk about adding a day to Costa, or adding a day to Chandler, or bringing these items to South End Market, or bringing a coffee shop. You know, we operate with a seven-day-a-week, three-shift-a-day schedule. So it requires a very intensive number of folks. So as a, as a number, food and beverage tends to be the highest. It's everything from cooks to front-of-house positions. And then security is another area that we're always looking to bring on additional folks and grow that workforce. Because one of the great things about our business is we can create opportunities for individuals that want to grow their careers. We had a number of folks recently that were accepted into either police academies or going into correctional institutions and are able to grow and we're able to give them the foundation for that growth. And so that's an area of the business that we've seen opportunity as well. Thank you. Let's jump to the next slide. Thanks. So this is, I imagine we probably all see these together in real time, but Beth works very, very hard and has done a wonderful job of making sure that these positive steps that we are taking, in particular as it pertains to hiring, are front and center for our community. We look to hire local. That's our goal. And Beth and the team have very creatively, as we've looked at how to change the roles themselves, but also how to advertise the roles that we have. And so this is just a small example of that. And if we jump to the next slide, we had a large event just about a month ago that you can almost hear what's happening.
We can, we can tell.
You can tell, yeah. So this is, we had, we have hiring events every week. So every week at the property, we are running hiring events. We have folks available to immediately interview and provide on-the-spot job offers. But we've also done several mass hiring events. And so that's what this is an example of here on the screen, a great testimonial from an individual that works at the property and was also able to participate in the event. And these really help us when we're looking for large numbers of people at one time to really try to get those folks in as quickly as we can and then to make offers on the spot to them, which is exactly what we did here at Go Bruins. And one other, and really proud of this, we're looking for ways to tell the stories of our team members. There's some really amazing stories. And so we started this year going out to some of our local periodicals and put this together with an individual named Zakiya Scott. She was actually a homeless mom and worked through our local community college system, was able to gain some culinary training, came into MGM Springfield as a day-one team member, has been promoted up now several times, and just last year became a first-time homebuyer. And those are the types of things that don't happen without, you know, opportunities like this, without inspiring individuals like this and the confluence of these things coming together. So you'll see these stories going out on a quarterly basis here locally. And I think it's just hopefully something that inspires other folks to want to join the team as well. So we'll jump one more. And you can click through these, Heather. These are just examples of, we have new hire orientation every, every week. Gus and Sean and Amanda and Arlen, Beth and I often are part of the welcome for that group. And so we take the picture and you saw them represented there and then click through in tap. This is the new Game Sense. So I was talking about how we had to build out a new space. And so we gave them an even larger space, enhanced it, added signage, screens, gave them office space as well. And so this is a better, in my opinion, location, extremely high visibility for guests that want to engage with our responsible gaming platform. At the same time, it's what allowed us to do what we did on the next slide, which is to build out first in concept form. I think in person it looks even better. I don't know if you agree, Gus.
I do, hundred percent. I love roasted bean.
It is good. But this was the concept and I would, I imagine everybody in the room and hopefully online, you've had a chance to see it, but I would, I would challenge you often, these concepts don't, you know, in real life, don't turn out quite the same or looking quite as good. This is one, I think, that looks even better. So that's what we were able to get out of that set of events and a great enhancement for our guests, which also added hours expanded in the first quarter, so until ten o'clock every day. You can go ahead, Heather. Thirty-one L. Our offices look out at thirty-one L. We walked right by it on the way here. I know this has been a labor of love for the whole city. And, and so, you know, congratulate, congratulate the city, the city council, private and public partnership. We've contributed sixteen million dollars to this particular project. We've also contributed a hundred parking spaces. And so for those that, that know the challenges of parking at the moment, in a good way, it's very meaningful. And so this is a neighborhood project that we are going to be partnered to well beyond the contribution of the dollars by nature of our shared parking and can't wait to see this ultimately finished. I had a chance to walk through it a few times. It's really exciting. And we'll go to the next one, Heather. Mass Mutual, Sean, I don't know if you want to mention anything of note here, but equally excited about this for a lot of reasons.
Yeah, of course. So obviously, we saw the garage go down, which is a huge step forward for us at the Mass Mutual Center. It just touches on the partnership between MGM and the city. And then, of course, the Massachusetts Convention and Center Authority. A lot of people here are of the opinion of this garage would sort of never progress, would never come down. And now not only have we seen it come down, but we've seen the rendering as to what's to come. And we're extremely excited about not only what that does for our business, but the, you know, obviously, the assistance and traffic flow that it'll have for property and for everybody in downtown Springfield. So very excited to see the garage go up and then the corresponding plaza space that'll go along with that for some outdoor events and some activation with community events. And then the pedestrian foot traffic that Bruce Laneway will be. So couldn't be more excited for 2024. Again, targeting, you know, spring, early summer in 2024 for the final product and then the plaza that comes shortly thereafter. But a very, very big step for us at the building and honestly for the city. So very, very much excited and huge testament for partnership again.
Just a question about that. Do we, I don't know this. I should know this. Who's gonna own and operate the plaza, the park, so to speak?
Yeah, so the Convention Center Authority is obviously going to effectively be the owners of it. Now, the operation of the garage will likely go out to a third party. They'll probably RFP that out. The expectation now, obviously knowing that nothing's been finalized yet, is that the team at the Mass Mutual Center will sort of be responsible for booking the plaza space, working with the community to engage your community events and likely at least some aspect of our staff helping to service those events as well with operations, with cleaning, with usher staff, but sort of working with the bid as well. So sort of the three-way approach with that parking, whoever's gonna manage the parking garage, and then our team making sure we're activating space as much as we possibly can to make that more of a foot-traffic accessible location, activate that part of the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. And we'll, we'll jump one more. Very recent, but equally exciting from our standpoint. You know, we, we love this contiguous development around us. That's really what we were hoping for coming into the city and watching this project now coming to life in some pretty material ways with the clock tower building, Colonial Block. We couldn't be more excited to see this moving forward. I think it's a great thing for the city. Ultimately, I think it'll be a great thing for MGM Springfield as well. So we were able to participate in some ways and Gus as well in really talking about the benefits of working in the city of Springfield. And so I'm thrilled that, that the city received as much attention as they did. And again, just can't wait to see this continuing to move forward. So congratulations to the city council, the city, and to the region.
Just, Chris, just following up. So MGM, of course, is proud of what's going on across the street from us. But we're not just passive cheerleaders of the efforts the city has undertaken. Tim Sheen, the city's chief development officer, and Amanda Pham from the Springfield Development Authority, they've asked MGM Springfield to meaningfully engage with the potential developers. We've hosted several, a couple of occasions, developers to come to the property. We've spoken to why MGM is here, what MGM means, what we, what Springfield means to MGM, and why we would want the other developers to come and join us in revitalizing Springfield.
Yeah, I, you know, my own reflection on that is too often the city puts out RFPs for building who say, oh, there's only one bidder. Or, you know, we've had to put it out three times. And, I mean, the school department, former school department's a perfect example. So I was personally thrilled to see that level of private sector interest and the variety of opportunities that are there for the development and optimistic about what can happen there. So thank you for your assistance.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Heather, let's jump to the next one. So this is, is the quick look. Actually, there are a couple of things I'll throw onto this. So we've been tending to focus on this in ninety-day increments of time. And you can imagine that underneath these projects are the ones we talked about a little bit earlier. There's a tremendous amount of, of planning and hiring and advertising that goes around with each of these. But there's some items that we're really excited about that have been either intermittently dark or in some cases dark for a little while that are gonna be coming back to life. And so our lobby bar and our hotel lobby is one of my favorite parts of the property. Our lobby bar, we have activated during peak periods and things like that over the first, last few years. But we're gonna be bringing it back with regular hours on Fridays and Saturdays. That's gonna be starting Memorial Day weekend. Can't wait for that. Chandler, just last week, we added Thursdays. So Chandler now Thursday through Sunday. We also expanded the menu at both Chandler and Costa. And Gus went to both of them this last weekend. I only got it to one of them. We are supporting our own efforts as much as possible, but a lot of really positive feedback there. Free Music Friday, again, this is an entirely free concert activation that we are expanding the season. Previously started about halfway through June. We're gonna start this Memorial Day weekend, run it all the way through the summer into September. And we have a couple of, of national acts that I think folks will, will recognize that Amanda has convinced us to, to book, that we couldn't be more thrilled. And again, partnering with White Lion, partnering with a number of groups that are gonna be sharing this experience with us, I think, is a great thing. And we haven't forgotten about our Kringle Space. I will mention, we had during a particularly, we had a wonderful winter, but we had one weekend, unfortunately, of bitterly cold weather in which we managed to burst a pipe in the Kringle Space. And so if you walk in there right now, we've got a little bit of construction. And so if you walk in there right now, we've got a little bit of construction going on. That space will be open in, or completed in August. But that has not stopped us from continuing to shop the space. In fact, I'm meeting with a group at six o'clock tonight. And so we are working together to identify opportunities to bring Kringle back to life and that remains a priority. The one that you don't see, which is also kind of fun, we're adding a pool bar this year. So we're going to be bringing a pool bar outside to our pool space. Apparently when people are swimming, they also occasionally like to have a drink. And so I'm, I'm excited to see that come to life and, and see how that does. But I think it's a great amenity to add. It's not one we've had historically at MGM Springfield. Jump to the next one. This is, you'll really see this represented in a very different way in some of our upcoming slides that Beth is going to walk us through. But volunteerism is an extremely important part of what it means to be a part of MGM Resorts. It's one of the elements of what we do that we in this room, I know value the most. I personally, it's one of the reasons I joined the company. We have invested as a team in the Springfield community, literally thousands of hours of volunteer work now at this point in our, in our brief history. But we also have, you know, events, councils and organizations who sole purpose on the property is to design these, identify these and engage with our team members in ways that they help select. Keeping in mind, again, the largest percentage of our workforce is from the city of Springfield itself. And so this is just a snapshot of what that is called. It's called a Social Impact and Sustainability Council. That we have stood up and run on the property entirely driven by our team members. And this is just a look at the month of April and some of the events that we are going to be volunteering for. And so it is part of, of the fabric of, of who we are and will continue to be. You go ahead Heather. We're going to get to a much better part of the presentation now because we switched to Beth speaking. And so with that, first we'll just thank her, you know, Beth has been with us. She joined us during COVID, really during one of the more challenging times. Came into a new role and has done some really extraordinary things. And as Gus and I often remark, you know, it's very rare that you can walk into the room and, and folks really respond very positively to, to Beth and her energy. She's been a great influence on our executive team. And is a big part of what you're about to see next.
Wow, well, thanks Chris.
Nice, nice intro.
Wow, thank you. Holy cow. If we could move to the next slide, it has been a little bit since we have met. So I, with the help of the team, we put together a photo album of sorts to walk you through what we've been up to since last we met. Going back to, as Chris referenced, coming out of, of COVID and just thanking our first responders. You'll see in the upper left hand corner, we had a, an event at our bowling lane, offering police and fire. Just come in, hang out on us, bowl, eat some food, have a few drinks, have a great time. And, and we did. And our team members came out to that as well to, to thank them in person. We extended that also to Top Golf. We had an event for first responders from AMR, a great event there. Just to again, welcome them, thank them, come in, have a great time. And I know a lot of people on this call and our local delegation were there to help welcome and celebrate as well. If you go to the upper right corner in the same slide, thanks Heather, community partnerships. We have just so many fabulous community partners that we are so proud of. And you're going to hear me say the word proud quite often throughout these next few slides as we go through this photo album of sorts. Open Pantry, they have been a community partner since day one and we were proud to, since we last met, we've engaged with them numerous times. Not only by presenting a check, as you see in the upper right hand corner, with Terry Massey there and his team, but also through volunteering. If you look in the middle of this slide, you'll see another effort that is very near and dear to the hearts of those of us at MGM Springfield. Taking part in ahead of Veterans Day, a flagging effort at Springfield Cemetery with a group of people all day long and spent the day making sure that our veterans are honored in the way that they should be. And this is something that we continually work with Joe DiCaro over there at Veteran Services and continue that relationship. Chris mentioned Game Sense. This is about a little bit after we met last, when we introduced another budgeting tool called Play My Way. We just celebrated the one year anniversary of that. Again, very proud to introduce that to, to our guests and to those who would like a little help. They're there twenty-four seven. Love the folks there. We work very closely with them and the MGC, of course. We could go to the next slide. As we go through this photo album, I direct you to the upper left corner. We, another community partner that we just adore is Habitat for Humanity of Western Mass. This was a project that we worked on several different times. This was for a mother in Springfield and her two sons, a single mom Natasha. We helped to build her home over on Bay Street and also helped to welcome them home. You'll see in that large picture on the bottom, this was their, their key ceremony day where they actually got the keys to their house and we all came back. And just a really great moment for all of us. And, you know, we're proud of, of not only sponsoring Habitat for Humanity with putting dollars behind that, but also through our volunteerism. Bottom left corner, just had to include that, our facilities folks. Extremely excited to be able to donate a lot of tools to the folks at Habitat for Humanity. So wanted to include that. If you look into the middle and upper right, this is a partnership that we have had since day one with the Spirit of Springfield, supporting all of their events. We are presenting sponsor, as you likely know, for the Spirit of Springfield. This was a sad day for Chris recently because he had to turn over the reins. I know.
You got to keep it.
No, the golden star, no, no, no.
Yeah.
So turning over the reins, he was honorary chair for the last year for, for this great event that brings the community together each and every year. But just proud to continue that partnership and we look forward to more events to come throughout twenty twenty-three. Just a quick mention, Loaves and Fishes, this is something, again, that's near and dear to the hearts of our team members who regularly volunteer to put lunches together, to serve lunch, to put dinners together. So wanted to include their efforts as well. If we could go to the next slide. As we go through our photo album, as some of you in this room, I know, know. It can get hot in, in the city of Springfield and last summer was a doozy. So you know, cooling centers were open. We were very happy to donate water. We get the call and we are, we respond. Also donating water to local communities, rec departments. Second picture on the upper left. Right is East Long Island Recreation Department. And the team member I want to give a shout out to is Justin Glinsky. He's head of our warehouse. He personally is the Santa of water. So he likes to go to every single delivery and gets pictures. It's just, it's so cool. If you go to the right, you'll recall that last summer was the first Pride Parade of Springfield. We worked very closely with them. Very excited to be a presenting sponsor and to have such a massive turnout from our own team members. We are very excited to also be a presenting sponsor as we move forward for the second Pride Parade. Middle picture is the Puerto Rican Parade, which again, we had a, a large number of team members also proud to be a sponsor of and continue that relationship into twenty twenty-four. If you look on the left, that was our bottom left, that was our anniversary, our fourth anniversary last August where we presented checks, big checks to some of our community partners who we've been, have been working with for, for many years, some, some many years. And some new community partners who are just doing fabulous things in and around the city of Springfield. I also want to call attention to the bottom right. This is something that our team does every single year. And this is working with a group called Source to See. They do a Connecticut River cleanup, which as you know, we're right there. And so this is something that we make sure that we are a part of in sponsoring and in volunteer hours every single year. If we could go to the next one, please. So I promise we're almost done with this, but these are just some moments that we are super proud of and, and want to highlight. So bear with me. If you look in the top left, I, I know everyone in this room and, and online knows, hopefully that the Mayflower Marathon was looking for a new home this past Thanksgiving. And we are so proud to have sponsored this, hosted this event along with Rock One O Two, partnering with them when they were looking for a new home. We are thrilled that we were able to be that new home and they raised just under a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of donations. So really proud to be a part of that. I mean, this is a collaborative effort with so many volunteers from Mass Mutual Center and MGM Springfield. Just really, really proud about that and proud to be able to continue that relationship. We're already in the talks for this year coming up. If you look in the middle of the screen, this is a, a new relationship we have with Rachel's Table, which we donate surplus food on a regular basis with the new van that they have. I know some of you who are on this call were part of that celebration. So thank you for coming to that. Just another part of our food and beverage. They were really excited to be able to create this partnership and it continues today. We'll continue through at least twenty twenty-three and hopefully beyond. If you look on the right-hand side, that is a new, a new relationship we have, something that we started at MGM Springfield this fall called our Adopt a School Program. So we worked with the city of Springfield, the school department and superintendent with superintendent Warwick to identify a school, which was a South End Middle School this year. Which is, as you know, right down the street from where we are, literally we're neighbors. So we have been, we started with a, a cooking event that our, our executive chef and his team helped to put together. It was fabulous. Chris and, and Mary Sarno were, I don't know if you were helping or hindering in one of those pictures, but yeah. But it's just been a great relationship throughout this year. We have been doing different events throughout the year for volunteering. You'll see in the bottom right, focused on what matters. That's our mantra at MGM Springfield and throughout the company. We also supplied a surprise Valentine's Day lunch for the, the staff at the South End Middle School. If you look right next to that, this is something new that we participated in this year, the Winter Walk. That was something that's been done in Boston for a number of years. They brought it to Western Mass to Springfield and it was a walk to raise awareness for the homeless in Western Mass and funding those two groups that we are all familiar with. Friends of the Homeless, for example, was a community partner of ours. So happy to help sponsor that. And also a large group from our team participated in that chilly day and walking through city streets. And finally, on the bottom left, this is something that we, this is an iconic event that I know everybody knows, the Raise of Hope Walk Toward the Cure of Breast Cancer. Our team really embraced it. This past year had a big group who participated and we also were presenting sponsor. And we look forward to continuing that relationship as that comes up this October. If we could go to the next slide. I could go on and on. You probably think I already have about wonderful things that, that I really am, as an MGM employee, proud to have brought, be a part of all of these wonderful relationships. And as was highlighted earlier, just wanted to take a moment and actually thank the media too for coming out to cover all of these events. I mean, I tell you, we, we get some great coverage and we're very thankful for that because yes, does it shine a light on what we're doing at MGM Springfield and all the great volunteer efforts and dollars we put behind these community groups. But it also shines a light on all of these wonderful community partnerships and these groups that do so much for Springfield and beyond. If we could go to the next slide, please. Special events. Continuing with the next slide, just some of the things that having some fun. These are things that we, since we last met, we've referenced Free Music Friday. I don't know how many in this hall and in this room have been down. But last summer was probably Amanda, one of the most well-attended we've ever had. So looking forward to continuing that. I know we've talked about it before and Amanda will talk a little bit more about it coming up. Red Sox Winter Weekend, incredibly proud of that relationship that we maintain with the Red Sox, bringing some of the stars of the show to our show at MGM Springfield. Can't forget our beloved Springfield Thunderbirds on the bottom. Two pictures on the left there. It has been such a blast to be able to host watch parties for home games that are sold out. People want to just come, hang out, have a great time on the plaza. We put it on our Jumbo TV down there. And also for away games, for people who can't make those games, we make it available. It's just such a great vibe on, on the plaza and to be able to provide that has just been so much fun. Quick little story on the right. This is a gentleman, his name is Edward. He is a day one guest and he turned one hundred several months ago. And he developed a relationship, fond relationship with one of our servers who would make sure that he was all set and had his drink right there. He'd come for a few hours, sometimes every day, maybe once a week, but was always there. So we got a tip from his family that he was turning one hundred. So we decided as a team, we put together a surprise for him. And I tell you something, if, if the, the media picked it up and went a little viral, we're proud of that, but it just made his day. I, I will say his, his family, they're so appreciative. They're just lovely. And he recently passed away. So we are very, we're very thrilled that we were able to give him that and the look on his face was just amazing. There, there's so many of us there. It was great. If we could go to the next slide, please.
Beth, if we could just in, in terms of time, we're, we're about forty-five minutes in. So maybe like another five or ten minutes if we could on the presentation and then make sure there's time for.
Yeah, we can go through this. This is just another thing that went viral. That was a lot of fun. We retired one of our canines who is frolicking on the beaches of Florida with his original handler. So that was something great I wanted to include. And a car show that was a great success last summer, we're bringing it back this fall as well. We could go to the next slide. Just including some of the other events, Bright Nights, which we are proud to be a presenting sponsor again this year. And then the activation on our plaza during the holidays, which we are looking forward to again this year. We could go to the next slide. Again, special events, opening of our sports book, the Air Force Band, which we were proud to be the presenting sponsor of that. And walking in the St. Patrick's Day parade, just a lot of fun community involvement. If we could go to the next slide, please. Again, some of these special events, very proud, as I keep saying, that we've been getting such wonderful coverage to showcase some of the things that not only we're doing, but our community partners as well. If we could go to the next page. And at this point, I will turn it over to Sean Dolan and Amanda Crotto.
Great. So similarly, I wanted to look back on some of the shows that we've had since we last spoke. So starting with Symphony Hall, which is of course an incredible venue that we're lucky to be able to program. These are some of the shows we saw in twenty twenty-two. You'll recognize a lot of these names, some of whom will be returning this year. Or, you know, maybe, maybe will be announced in the future. What's great about these shows and, and the other shows that we had last year were.
They canceled it. I'm sorry. I was very upset.
So a lot of these shows were co-promoted by Live Nation with us, which is a, a great thing that we can do it since they're all, Live Nation, as I'm sure you're aware, is a key to some of the, the highest rated and artists and most well-known tours. So it's been great to be able to, to do that at Symphony Hall. We'll go to the next slide. And then looking at what we've had at property in the past year, we've touched on the ice rink, Free Music Fridays, of course, both in the ballroom and out on the plaza. We programmed Roar Comedy. At the end of last year, we went to program it twice a week, every Friday and Saturday. We have comedy in the beautiful armory on property. And then of course, also programming the Aria Ballroom. We had a sold out New Year's Eve show, Thunder Down Under is always selling out for us and some great names like, like Chris Isaac and Bronx Tale, which will be returning later this year as well. Go to the next one.
But the Mass Mutual Center, looking back again, like Amanda, in twenty twenty-two had some great success, again, the partnership with MGM City and N C. Uh, again, the partnership with MGM on City and NCCA, obviously incredible to host. You know, we've had WWE in the past, but that relationship continues blossoming. John Mulaney's won that we have to call out again, a sold out national act uh because of the partnership with MGM and event. Typically, we would not have seen coming through Spring, Springfield. Uh, and you look back at these events in twenty twenty two with the ones on the screen and then Heather, if you want to go to the next one. Um, it's, it's so important to note that the success of these events and, and the fact we're bringing these in a market where we never have in the past. Is leading to such exciting bookings here in the future because we're seeing promoters coming to the market, a market they previously hadn't come to. Have great success and effectively want to come back. You look at Paul Patrol is one of those ones. Again, a family show. Uh, they were not, they've never been Springfield before and now we have them in books for the next two years. Um, the Hall Fame Classic back in Springfield, the partnership with the Hall of Fame. Uh, you know, a show like Cat Williams again is a partnership with the MGM and another promoter that typically was not coming into the market. But that relationship, we were able to leverage that uh and book that content. And then if you want to go to the next one, Heather. Um, continuing on the trend, obviously, winter weekend, we touched on Kevin Hart just in the past week, a sold out show. Uh, absolutely incredible having an event like Kevin Hart in the building. Again, another one where we typically wouldn't be able to compete, just being a smaller venue. But leveraging obviously that relationship with MGM. And I put the Globetrotters and Disney on this uh, on the slide. Again, annual events for us. And the reason I put it on is just to highlight the momentum of the city. We've seen. This year, we had record breaking years for both of those events and the year prior, we're record breaking years for both of those events. Uh, the success of MGM Springfield and the city and everything and the, the excitement of, of development, everything that's going on in the city. Is effectively lifting events in the building that have been annual events. We're seeing uh these events do far beyond in terms of tickets sold, gross tickets uh revenue. Than they've ever done in the past. So we're having phone calls with these promoters where they're extremely excited to come back, make sure their holes are on the calendar. So the success of the city just in totality is lifting up these annual events as well. Uh, and go to the next one, Heather.
So these are some of the, the events that we've had at Symphony Hall and on property just so far this year. In the Armory alone, we posted more than twenty five comedy shows just so far um in twenty twenty three. I mentioned the indoor um Free Music Friday series due to the success in demand and we love featuring local acts in that series. Um, and of course, it's a, a free event that um our guests are able to enjoy. We had a near sellout with Mercy Me at Symphony Hall. And just this past weekend, following Kevin Hart, MS Mutual Center on Thursday, we had um America's Got Talent um Tape Face in the ballroom, which was a really fun and unique. Uh, event. We go to the next one. And then this is what's coming up. Um, some of these names you'll see are returning names, which goes to the point that Sean's making that. Um, promoters and agents are seeing the success that their shows can be doing in Springfield. And they like the partnership with us and they like the partnership with Symphony Hall. So they're coming back. Um, Chelsea Handler sold out last year. She'll be back again later this year. Chicago was here in twenty one. They'll be back later this year. Um, these are nationally known acts. Um, many of whom, once again, are partnerships with Live Nation. Can you go to the next slide? And then this is what we have coming up in our ballroom. Similarly, um, three of these shows are also returning shows. So Killer Queen, Bronx Tale, Matt Fraser have all done really well on property for us before. So we're excited to, to bring them back and offer more events to our guests and, and to the city. And then the Commodores Legends and Concert in um Croce, place Croce will also be returning or will be coming um to Aria later this year. And the next.
Is that about Jim Croce?
It's him. It's his son. Yeah, his son plays the music. I've just heard incredible things about it. Yeah, yeah. It's, it's been doing really well.
And then what's coming to the Mass Mutual Center? I, I mean, the slide in front of us, nothing short or incredible in terms of contents. Um, the past month or so has been extremely exciting for us. Obviously this Saturday with Cass and Crowns. And then Tiffany, Amy Poehler and Drew and then Santana and Bill Burr in August. So an incredible run here for us. Again, extremely excited. Artists that we've typically not seen come to Springfield. Uh, again, continue to see that, that. Heather, you can go to the next one.
Not to date myself, but it's Santana and Woodstock.
They didn't have the social media, right?
So we uh, and, and we'll conclude with, with uh these last couple of slides, but we. Uh, have had an opportunity to, to speak to some of the folks in the community a little bit about what these efforts mean to them. Um, you know, we are a part of the community that we work in and we recognize how important it is. That we create positive opportunities for folks to come out to visit the entire city of Springfield, not just MGM Springfield. And so um, we were given some testimonials from a few of the folks that I think we all know and love. Uh, but Luisa, who. Um, is at the property all the time and, and shared obviously her excitement around MGM and the performances that we can bring to the city. Nadeem uh also uh just speaking to the impact that it has when a concert is happening. We've got a game going on. We have these activations downtown. It's good for the entire city. Um, and it's good for MGM Springfield as well. And the next one, um. And Ray just sent this to us this morning. Uh, again, a great, a great partner. It's a great picture too. Uh. But just speaking to the economic importance and impact of this work. Uh, you know, in MGM, we talk about how we are an entertainment company first. In all three hundred and sixty degrees of what that means. We're in the business of bringing people together. And we are also in the business of looking for ways to be best in market, best in class. Um, and you have seen that uh effort come to life in a variety of different ways over the. Four and a half, what will amazingly be five years, pretty extraordinary five years. Um, but we couldn't be more proud and I think it's more representative of what MGM Resorts looks to do. Than the announcement that we were able to make with Sean's help, uh, with Mary Sarno's help. Uh, just a few weeks ago, and that is the slide that we will conclude on. Uh, a concert that I will tell you, having worked here, you can go to the next slide, Heather. Um, have you worked in this, in this market for about three years now? This is the show we have tried to get. Um, so excited to be uh bringing Bruno Mars to. The city of Springfield, huge effort, a huge team effort. Um, but we're also going to show him a great time. We're going to show him um how amazing this city is in this region. Uh, can't wait to have him here two nights, June ten and June eleven. We will stop, uh, we'll stop with that.
There goes your money.
Well, thank you um for the presentation and Heather, if you could please stop sharing your screens so I can see everybody else. Uh, we were also joined earlier by Council President Letterman. Uh, I can't, doesn't look like he's still here, but I didn't want to acknowledge his attendance. And um with that, that was a really comprehensive uh presentation. So thank you for taking the time to prepare it and present it. And if there's any questions from counselors, Counselor Galvane, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for the presentation. It was very um in-depth and comprehensive and it includes everything. Um, I'm the Ward Eight City Counselor. That means I'm at the far end of the city, way far away from downtown. And I know that because you're downtown, a lot of things happen here. Um, so I would maybe just. Ask if maybe you're coming up towards that way. I know that you have actually. I shouldn't say that you haven't because um Yolanda Consell, my vice president, has been talking to someone at MGM, I don't know who. But about hiring and you guys actually came out there and did a little higher mini hiring event. Um, so I just, I would encourage more of that activity. We have um twenty six neighborhood councils in the city. And it'd be great if there was some, you know, MGM presence at some of those at some times, you know, um, I know it's a lot. But I just, I guess that's my question. Were, were you planning on going out to the neighborhood councils? Because Springfield is more than just downtown, um, as we all know. And I'd love for you all to see the rest of the city. We have a beautiful city. Um, Forest Park is beautiful. Um, up on Boston Road, we're going to get a new mall, hopefully. That'll be fun. That was a long one. Um, so yeah, so that maybe, I don't know if it's a question or just a comment. Um, but I did want to ask about the two hundred positions that you have open. Um, uh, what's the starting pay for like say frontline staff? If anybody knows.
Uh, we have a, a range. I'll hand it to Arlen as our um financial leader. We have a range of, of starting positions, obviously. Many of them are tip potential as well. So a lot of those we have are driven almost entirely by tips. But um I'll hand it to, to Arlen to, to walk through this high level. Um, and then I'll, I'll jump in with any um additions.
Um, kind of like Chris uh mentioned, um, a lot of the tip positions are at the minimum wage for the tip position. And then it just kind of goes up from there, um, earned by tips. Uh, we do ensure that everyone um that is on a tip position, thus may be minimum state wage. Um, but everybody always makes up the difference. Um, but it can range anywhere from a minimum um fifteen up to twenty dollars depending on the position. Um, so it's just our skills, they'll get a higher rate. Some are not skilled. So it's a wide range depending on what area you're doing um in our floor.
Yeah, thank you. I know that um positions are hard to fill during this time, especially after the pandemic. I think people discovered that. They really don't need to work for anybody. A lot of them are working for themselves or, you know, doing other things. So um I know how challenging that can be um to fill those positions. Um. I think that's what I have. Um, the other questions department for the city um regarding the taxes that you all paid. So again, I just want to thank you all for being here, for doing the presentation. Um, and I just look forward to everything else that you're doing. Voice cement tickets. My husband insisted we get them. We got them and then they got canceled. I'll tell him today that. Okay, it's coming back.
Yeah, we were as sad as you were, but they're.
That was Bruno Mars. What, what voice cement?
July seventh. Oh, let me put in my calendar so I can.
Yeah, and your tickets will work just as they.
Right. Okay. Thank you for Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Allen, you have anything?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Um. The first is um the skating rink. I know it's a, a net, but if we could keep it open. Through the end of February or whatever a reasonable end of winter is that I, I got that question directly at a lunch group. That I sit with at Red Rose and uh his family's full of skaters and was disappointed when it closed around the first of the year. I think I already talked to Chris about that. Anything you can do to extend that. Uh, it, it's just such a thing with Rockefeller Center and everything, that whole winter skating thing is. And may, and maybe it gets more, you know, marketed and, and that you're keeping it open longer. That, that's just a personal request. Um. With uh Live Nation, do, do any of your shows get caught up in this dynamic ticketing thing that Springsteen and Taylor Swift got caught up in?
We don't, we haven't hit the same struggles because they're just not the same style of, of acts. The demand that went into Springsteen and Taylor. And Beyonce are like, you know, what, a whole different scale of what we're up against at a, a smaller like midsize. Venue like, like Symphony Hall, for example. We do have um some premium pricing on some of our tickets. Um, for example, we might, uh, an aisle seat might cost slightly more than a, you know, seat in the middle of a row. But we, we've not run in any, any issue.
But that's normal. Just you better see cost more. This was the thing where the more people that.
Yes.
Went for it, the higher the price went and it was.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, I, I just glad you're aware of it and protecting against it.
I was in line for those Taylor tickets. I'm very aware.
And I was in Ireland when the uh tickets, Springsteen tickets went on sale and my kids are well trained. When I got back, they said, we have tickets to have for you. It took years to get them to that point. My, my other thing is uh um internships, you know, I teach at Springfield College. Chris did a great job speaking at my class the other day. And we had talked a little bit about, we haven't followed up on that. And now that we're here, I'd like to see if I can follow up on that on campus. The business department and on the campus. I have spoken to the career center. Uh, so I got, I think, clearance at Springfield College. So I, I don't know who the person is here to talk to more about that, but. If you want to let me know about that, connecting Springfield College, juniors, seniors, whatever. To internships or, or, or job opportunities, whatever the right thing is. So just let me know how to go about that if you're interested. And uh, then my last thing is uh volunteerism. Do you build into the, when you hire somebody, that they know they're going to be involved in this level of volunteer? I never, the level of volunteer.
Volunteering is volun, is.
It's volunteer.
I honestly have never worked at a place where there has been such a. A cheerleading group of people who get the troops motivated to spend their days off. Um, this weekend is uh Revitalize CDC Neighborhood Cleanup. We have a huge group going. We're sponsoring, but also. We don't have to cajole or, and, and this is something that, that.
I, I mean, I love that. I mean, I teach business ethics, as Chris knows, and I gave the kids an opportunity to. Not write about, you know, Patagonia or Ben and Jerry's or something, looking at good cultures, et cetera. But to actually go do social responsibility. We did a cleanup Saturday. I got one kid, Springfield College got five or fifteen total. I had one and some more. So tomorrow night at five thirty or no, or four thirty, several of my other kids said, I'll do it. I just can't go on Saturday. So we'll see tomorrow. But I mean, it's, I'm trying to encode it. That's terrific. And you get that level. It's, it's mind boggling and uh. So good job on that. That's all. That's my other things I could ask, but that's good for now.
Okay. Any other questions?
Counselor Galvane? No, thank you.
So we want to thank you for the presentation and um we'll continue our efforts towards the goals that you stated for uh the upcoming quarters. And uh I would say by the end of the year, we'll do another status update. Uh, sometime, you know, between Halloween and Christmas and figure out where we are. Obviously, if there's anything in between, we'll. Call another meeting, but um very pleased with the, the progress that you all have made and I think it's. A testament to your work to see some of the other things happening in and around, but what I'll refer to as the, the casino district. Uh, starting to take off in the direction that we, that we really intended five years ago. So thank you for those efforts. All right.
Thank you.
So with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you to our participants online. And we're going to disconnect you now, Heather. And uh.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you.